Alright everybody, thank you for being here. We're gonna start tonight's meeting of the Hubbard County Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. Bear with me while I read our meeting procedure please. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda items, materials are available for public viewing on the table located in the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrator off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order and disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The Chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first followed by Board of Adjustment business. The Chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The Chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenter's table, state his/her or their names and addresses for the record and explain his or her request. The PCBOA will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The Chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit for speaker per agenda item unless the Chair allows the speaker additional... Brian? Thank you. Uh, time. The Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the Chair recognizes the speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. The speaker should state his or her comments, excuse me, and address the issue, not the applicant. All comments are to be directed toward the PCBOA board. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The Chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they have already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Board. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the Chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The Chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The PCBOA will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the Chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA will make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Board will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the PCBOA Board will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 PM. The PCBOA may at its discretion continue an item that is already on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date and time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA through the Chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. Do-do-do-do. So, thank you very much. Um, so, we're gonna open the Planning Commission meeting with approval of minutes from last month, which there were none, and also discuss old business, which there is apparently none. So, new business, we do have a Shoreland Management Ordinance Amendment application by Tim O'Neill. Uh, the proposed amendment to Section 504 Height of Structures of the Shoreland Management Ordinance. Is Tim here? No. Okay. Um, alright, I have never done one of these, so help me out, people.
Ask for public comment, probably.
Ask for public comment right away. Is there any public comment on the, uh, Shoreland Management Ordinance Amendment application? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Do you want me to read this entire thing or has everybody got in front of them, kind of? We can just discuss it?
I think you could read what's being proposed versus what exists for the record.
Okay. Um, the ordinance amendment application was submitted that proposes changing the maximum structure height in Section 504 Height of Structures in the Shoreland Management Ordinance from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet. The Commission will need to make a recommendation on the application to the County Board. The Board will then decide whether it wants to consider amending the ordinance as proposed. So, basically, the thirty-five-foot structure height was added to the Shoreland Management Ordinance in nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, staff reviewed Planning Commission minutes at that time and found there were no notes explaining why a height restriction was added to the ordinance or why thirty-five feet was chosen. This is Larry. I guess my one question to Brian would be, has there really been an issue with this at all? Have you guys dealt with it, Environmental Services?
Not, not for height limitations. Um, I guess people have proposed such structures to go over thirty-five feet, but it's seldom.
Okay.
Brian, this is Ken. This is Ken. I want to confirm the fact that our current ordinance at thirty-five feet is at the hundred-foot setback point and that thirty-five feet is pro-rated down as you go closer to the lake. So, for instance, if I was at fifty feet, it's a shore impact zone point, that thirty-five would actually only be seventeen and a half feet. That's the way we've applied the ordinance, as I understand it, in the past.
I don't believe so. If they're able to expand legally, they would go up to thirty-five feet.
That's not the way we've applied it, as I recall, on a few occasions.
That's not how I have been, I've learned the ordinance.
Okay.
This is Tim speaking. I think that's true, what you're saying, Brian, and I think what Ken has said is we have as a Board to stay consistent. We've, we've kind of used that as a gauge for us on somebody wanting to build on an existing property and getting closer than the hundred feet.
For sightlines, maybe with variance requests, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Okay.
But myself, um, being in construction, uh, in the trades, um, I think, uh, myself, it needs to stay at thirty-five feet. There, uh, people are using the two-foot trust floor joist system on the first floor and two-foot between floors and nine-foot ceilings, so, uh, it doesn't take much to be at thirty-two, thirty-three, four feet, so... That's where I stand.
This is Larry. I would agree with that, that if you go much under thirty-five feet, it's really tough to put up a full two-story building, which in a lot of these lots are definitely desirable. Um, so yeah, my thoughts would be to leave it where it is also.
This is Mike. I, I agree with you guys. Uh, it hasn't been a problem in the past. I don't see any reason, uh, why.
Brian, this is Ken, and I know it was before your time, but back, and I think it was two thousand and six, that Environmental Service had proposed a thirty-four, uh, versus thirty-five. Do you recall why Environmental Services, I think that was before Eric's time and even your time. Is there anything in the record indicate what the thinking was at that time?
Uh, Eric had mentioned it to me, but I don't know the details on how that came to be or why it was proposed.
Yeah, and as I recall, the County Commissioners rejected it at that time.
I would, I think so. I mean, it's still thirty-five today.
Okay.
This is Larry. I would, uh, make a motion that we leave the ordinance as stated and not change the overall height structure.
Do we have to make a recommendation to the Commissioners to not change it?
That's correct.
Or does it stop here?
Yes, it's, no, it'd be a recommendation to the County Board.
Okay, so your motion should reflect that we make a recommendation to the County Commissioners that it stay at thirty-five?
Correct.
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to leave the height, um, at thirty-five feet as proposed, as is currently in the SMO. Um, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. So, we are gonna recommend that we leave that at thirty-five feet. Alright, so that should be all the business we have for the Planning Commission. Moving on to the Board of Adjustment, um, we have approval of minutes from last meeting.
This is Tim. I, I move we approve the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes from July twenty-eighth.
This is Ken. I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, I also vote aye. Minutes from the July twenty-eighth meeting have passed. Um, seeing no old business that was carried over from last month, we will move on to new business. If I get my ducks in a row. Alright. New business with the Board of Adjustment. We have an amended variance application twenty-four-v dash twenty-five by Richard Anderson. Lot six, block one, Sunny Point addition, Section twenty-one Township thirteen, Range thirty-three of Crow Wing Lake Township on Second Crow Wing Lake. A recreational development lake, parcel zero-six-three-seven-zero-zero-six-hundred. Application is requesting a variance from Section seven-oh-two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed addition on a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone and a variance from Section nine-oh-four-point-six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to increase a non-conforming impervious surface area percentage on the lot. Um, is Richard Anderson here or a representative? Okay. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Matt Henry.
And address?
Uh, seventeen-one-twenty-hundred-and-sixty-ninth Avenue, Parker Rapids, Minnesota.
Okay. Um, and a brief description of the variance you're looking for.
So, basically, they're looking to put an addition on the backside of the house, moving away from the lake, and in doing so, we would increase the impervious surface. Uh, we did have a site visit done to determine where the house was based on the high-water setback, and we were inside of the fifty-foot, so we were required to do the variance process regardless. Um, after we submitted for that variance, Eric sent me a message and said, "Hey, I think you might be over impervious. You wanna check that too?" So, I went back and checked that, and yes, we were over impervious to begin with. What we're proposing is still doing the addition as planned, but then taking out a fair amount of impervious surface to try and compensate for the addition going in.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions to start out?
Yeah, I wanna see this drawing here. The, um, I couldn't remember exactly from the visit. This is Ken, but I look at the deck on the front.
Yep.
And you have that blue hatched area.
And that's the patio below.
Yeah, is it that, I, the deck, I thought ran all the way across.
It's not quite. So, like, there's a, there's an amount that the deck is back from the pavers, um, on-site. So, basically, we're proposing that we'll just line up with that deck edge, 'cause they don't wanna get rid of the deck edge. So, I would take the pavers all the way back to the deck edge and take out anything that has come in front of that deck and just, it's all gone.
Okay, it's only a small portion, like a foot or two.
It's like two feet in front of the deck. Um, it's two by sixteen, and then the other side, it's one by, sorry, it'd be three by sixteen and one by seventeen in front of the deck, plus those stairs, which were...
Yeah. I worry about the stairs right now. I'm thinking that area, um, the small area there, you say is a foot or two by seventeen?
The one is a foot by seventeen, and then the other one is three by sixteen.
Oh, it's only three?
'Cause it's a two-foot step back. That, this, this was, uh, the original county drawing, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, and so I just tried to draw around it to make it...
The point I'm trying to get at, the deck sticks out much farther than what that drawing shows.
Yeah, it's basically, it's only, it's only two foot back, so the one side of the deck is twelve foot, the other side is ten foot.
The point I'm trying to get at is, if the deck's impervious surface, there's very little that isn't covered already by the deck, that would be...
Correct. I'm just trying to take out everything I can.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, it's, when you do the math down there, it's, yeah, it's a three by sixteen plus that seventeen square feet, and that was, that was a smaller amount than the, I think we're gonna lose a lot more of the sidewalk going up, um, than is pictured. We're also gonna lose a paver flowerbed thing there. We're also gonna take out all the tar and the concrete by the garage. Figuring that I would be able to get rid of about five-hundred-and-thirty square feet at a bare minimum. Um, I'd like to get more if I can find more places, and maybe it is just the whole path goes away and we just do grass and there's no path, and you know, it's doable. It's not like it's gonna be the end of the world. We'll take out as much as humanly possible. It's a small lot. And then we're planning to do stormwater management as well with gutters and such, and get everything.
At this time, I'd like to open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Any other discussion from the Board?
Yeah, this is Ken. I think when we were there, most of the, of the things they wanted to do to reduce the shore impact or the, um, pervious surface impact seems to me that creates more disruption than leaving as, as it is. You gotta, that sidewalk, I can't see, taking half of it out. And the deck's already impervious surface. My personal view is, either you look at the lot as being so small and really not more buildable, which would be a denial. I think the right, my personal view of the right answer is, we need to put, you can mitigate it with a significant buffer at the shoreline.
Okay.
Okay, and I, Tim and I measured, measured it out. Eric, or, um, Brian, can you move it up a little bit? Thing. If you take that area, as I look at the screen, to the left from your property line right up to where the, um, path to the lake is, which you're allowed by the ordinance to have that path down to the lake, you can get about twenty-four feet of shoreline. Okay, you're allowed twenty feet of recreation area by the lake, and you've got about forty-seven feet overall. The point I'm trying to get at is, I think a twelve, I, and I picked twelve feet, a twelve-foot by twenty-four long buffer with good buffer stuff would more than mitigate the effects of the impervious service, impervious surface that you wanna dig up and, and move around.
Okay.
That, and I can't come, I can't, can't visualize enough of where your gutters should be, but gutters on your addition and stuff, if they can be made to, to, uh, direct your, the roof water to the side rather than to the front.
For sure.
I personally would be supportive of not touching any of that impervious surface. Put in the buffer.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's what I'm suggesting to, to my colleagues here, uh, after looking at the property. What you would be allowed by the ordinance and what, what we're really trying to do is to protect the lake. The, the, um, thing I'd add to it, just for information, Soil and Water Conservation District, um, sells, I'll call them kits, that are specifically designed for buffer zone on a lake. And they come in, I think they're thirty, a batch of it is like thirty-six plants and that cover about a thirty-six square foot area, and it's very effective. And so if you would, you'd have to buy about, I don't know, six or eight of those to cover that area, right at, right at the edge where it drops off. And if that, if they were installed, twelve feet, so, twelve feet by twenty-four long, I think it would more than mitigate any of the impervious surface impact. So, that's my suggestion to the Board. Open for comment.
And so can I ask a question then?
Yeah.
And so the twelve feet were coming back from the lake and twenty-four across?
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for?
I can't draw, I can't show on here, but...
No, and that's just for clarification.
Yeah, if you, if you, we measured it there. If you took the edge of where the sidewalk or the walkway comes down before you go down to the dock and go to the left on your drawing, twelve feet in, you're gonna have to dig up the soil, plant, plant them, and they're nice little shrubs. They aren't ten feet high that you can't see the lake, but they're very effective at buffer zone. And Soil and Water Conservation District sells them in kits, or you can go to any one of the garden, Flying W, whatever, they'd know also. So, I would put that in a motion, uh, what that would be, but that would, that would help you do it. That's my thought, so I don't know how the rest of you feel after being there. Tim, are you?
This is Tim. I totally agree with that. Yep, I totally agree with that. I don't see any sense in, in tearing out, uh, a good sidewalk to walk down that hill to the house.
Trying to do what I can. And I'm open to suggestion, yeah, if it, if it's that, I think the homeowners would be more than happy to go that route, so.
This is Larry. I agree. I mean, part of the problem here, it's not that this house is obnoxiously large or anything like that, or there's anything. It's just, it's a small lot, so percentage-wise, it just makes it a problem in a hurry. Um, so yeah, I think to do the least damage to the lake and stuff, I agree with Ken as well. If we can get a good buffer on that shore, um, shoreline there, um, leave the rest of it alone so we don't free up a bunch of loose dirt and stuff. Um, and as far as the addition, I think that's all fine, um, meets all the requirements. So, yeah, I would be in favor of, of accepting this as stated.
Okay. The, um, let me try and make a motion.
Please do.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that, um, it's hard to say acceptable, but we'll accept the application. However, the applicant does not have to do any of the impervious, pervious surface removals that was suggested, but rather they mitigate the impervious surface with a twelve-by-twenty-four-foot buffer zone by the lake running from the property line, what's that, what direction is it?
South property line?
South property line up to the walkway to the lake. Uh, and that they use, um, Soil and Water Conservation District's buffer zone, um, vegetation or equivalent. Okay. And I would give you a copy of that if I had it. I looked all the way through my files today and I couldn't find it. So, if you went to Soil and Con, Conservation, they can tell you.
Perfect.
They have the Shoreland Restoration Project every year they run. They can actually get good deals through, uh, the lakes or through Hubbard County Cola, uh, the lake. If, and I think that Second Crow Wing is part of that. Okay, so...
Also, the, the twelve feet would be from the OHW landward?
To the top of the ridge. I don't know quite where, oh, always W is. If you recall, it came and then there was a drop, there's a drop-off step that goes down.
Just go from the top of the ridge?
From the top of the ridge. That's a good point. Not from, that's a good point, Tim.
Okay.
From the top of the, the ridge, uh, where it drops off to the lake, back to all feet.
On the south side of the property, to the south of the walkway, we start at the top of the ridge and go twelve feet towards the lake.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
And twenty-four feet, basically.
Okay, is that, is that clear enough?
The ridge that drops to the shore, right that ridge, and then go landward?
Right, gotcha. Okay, I was going the wrong direction. Got it. Makes sense.
If I could draw on this picture, I would draw it on. Okay, finding the facts, I would say, um, number one is variance in harmony with the general purposes intended of official controls. Uh, I would say although impervious surfaces exceeded, attempts to reduce it seem to be more disruptive, uh, than not changing it, and the mitigation of a buffer two-hundred-and-eighty square feet at the shoreline ridge and guttering away from the lake, a reasonable compensation for the surface, or, yeah, impervious surface overage. So, it's a yes. Second is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official controls. And I would say the addition to the house and entry are reasonable size-wise to add to an eleven-hundred-fifty-eight square foot house. That's a yes, and I would accept the recommendations from Environmental Services staff for questions three, four, and five.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. This is Larry. We do have a motion to accept this variance with the conditions of a buffer zone planting, which we discussed, and also guttering away from the lake, if those are both acceptable. Okay? Do I have a second, please?
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to accept this variance. Um, that would be variance...
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four-v twenty-five by Richard Anderson. Uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. Thank you very much. You'll get a letter from Environmental Services.
Environmental Service needs to inspect it, but I'll trust them.
Okay, moving on. We have variance application thirty-v dash twenty-five by Rebecca Waylon. The east one-half of the east one-half of the northeast quarter, Section twenty-five Township one-forty-five, Range thirty-three, Helga Township, Parcel eleven-twenty-five double-oh-one-twenty. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section four subdivision A one-B one of the subdivision ordinance to create a tract that does not comply with the three-hundred-foot minimum lot with requirement.
Hi.
State your name and address for the record, please, and a brief description of your variance.
Rebecca Waylon, two-six-eight-six-eight, four-hundred-seventy-fourth Street, La Porte, Minnesota. We are looking to get a variance for a smaller width across the roadway for a five-acre parcel off of our forty acres.
Okay. Any questions from the Board immediately?
I don't have any.
Okay, I would open the public comment at this point. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment.
Can I just maybe add, um, the two tracts, um, are already developed. The west one's a five-acre tract, uh, but it doesn't quite meet the width. If it were four-point-nine versus five acres, it would only have to be a hundred-and-fifty. So, it seems unreasonable, uh, to require this to be lessened, uh, or that it's okay to be the three-hundred. And I would propose that we accept the, um, uh, application and accept the staff's findings of fact.
Okay, we're gonna do this one quick, wonderful. Thanks, Ken, we have a motion to accept this variance as stated and accept staff's finding of facts. Do I have a second?
This is Tim, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept this variance. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye. The variance has passed, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Should've added that Helga Township has approved it, too.
It was approved a few years ago once already, it just didn't get filed. That was an easy one. Okay, this is Larry, moving on, variance thirty-one-v dash twenty-five by Bernadine Schumacher, part of Government Lot Three, Section Thirty-two, Township one forty, Range thirty-four of Henrietta Township on Long Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel thirteen-thirty-two-zero-zero-seven-hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from section five-oh-seven-point-two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to allow a mechanized lift as a means of assessing the lake, accessing the lake in addition to existing set of stairs. State your name and address for the record, please.
Bernadine Schumacher, one-six-three-three-two Deerview Road, Park Rapids.
Thank you very much, and a brief description of your variance.
I have sixty-four steps down to Long Lake, and as I continue to age and my friends and family do, we're having difficulties getting people down to enjoy the lake. And I would like to have a tram installed on the north side of my property line and be able to keep my existing staircase, which was installed in the early to mid-nineties, which is still in excellent shape for those of you who viewed it. Because if there is a malfunction or a power outage or something like that at the tram, it would not allow access up now, which could be an issue.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment. This is Larry, yeah, we approve these quite frequently. The second set of stairs just makes sense for a safety aspect to have another access. Where you want to put it seems to be reasonable, it's destroying as minimal, as minimal of for the hillside as you can. So yeah, I would move that we accept this variance and staff's finding of facts. Do we have a second?
This is Ken, oh, I'm sorry.
And Mike, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept variance application thirty-one-v dash twenty-five. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
This is Larry, I vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. All right, variance application thirty-two-v dash twenty-five by Dwayne Pochrell?
That's Heckrell.
Heckrell, thank you.
He's not here. I'm his son.
Okay. Lot four, block one, Pickarilla Lake Addition, Section sixteen, Township one forty-one, Range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Pickarilla Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel sixteen dot eighty-five dot double-o-four-hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven-oh-two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming dwelling located within the shore impact zone. State your name and address for the record, please, and a brief description of your variance.
Peter Heckrell, seven-five-seven-five Seventh Avenue, New Auburn, Minnesota, five-five-three-six-six. And we would like to add an addition of ten by twenty-six feet across the backside, not going forward towards the lake, but also to get better access. Dad and his wife are, dad's almost ninety, she's like eighty-eight, and walking around to the front. It just needs that and some other normal wear and tear, but no one's really done it for thirty years. So I kinda got the duty, because I'm the only one that is qualified to do so. Other than that, we're going to change the gable side to side now with like a incline in front slightly, which just as a builder makes no sense to me at all, I would've done it differently, so. Four-twelve truss is changing the gable front to back, so drainage goes off the sides, not having to rely on drainage systems because no one's up there to maintain them. So it's just off and gone. No, no problem, no maintenance. There's, like I say, there's, uh, just issues with accessibility. Unfortunately, in the not-too-distant future, I'll have that problem too. But all that in mind, that and an additional six grandkids, I think, on my brother's side, I don't have any, but that's what the place was for, that's why my dad and his dad built it, just family vacation area. And it just needs to be updated. And the biggest issue is how close it is to the water, and if you can see the photos of the flags out front, that was where it was when I was five. It hasn't been there in forty-five years, where it is now, and it's still regressing. I, seriously, since I was maybe in seventh grade, I haven't seen it even close to that. It's like four decades ago. I'm sixty-one. It just seems a bit of an issue, since it's been sitting there forever, I never even heard of this before, as it being a problem. Probably because the water dropped and no one bothered to think about it, but I guess I'm not the only person that's run into that issue recently. The, I think it was about thirty-eight years ago, they moved the highway and carved out a big piece of the East Bay, water dropped about three feet right there. Highway Department did that, I don't know what they were thinking, but it just hasn't changed since, since, geez, I was there, came home unleaving army, that was nineteen-eighty-three, the water has not been any different. There's twenty feet in front of that flag now, at least, even though it's mostly pretty mucky, but. Now, it really didn't add much, but it's enough. And I'll have a level rear entrance for Dad and Claire to be able to get in and out, because, let's just say, walking is getting to be a challenge for them.
Any questions from the board?
This is Tim, so this is going from a one-bedroom to probably a two because of this? It's going to probably, maybe two. Bigger kitchen, just bigger general living room area. I'm not thinking bedrooms necessarily, it's more like general space. Oh, I see. Just 'cause, you know, we're talking, if everybody came up there at once, it's twenty people. So bring your trailer and go anywhere but here, because the driveway's gonna look like the neighbors' two houses down where on the Fourth of July, it was literally solid trailers, you couldn't see the grass from their cabin all the way to the road. And I'm not talking little trailers, I'm talking big ones. It was just packed in, I don't, I don't wanna see that happen. Mostly we're talking about maybe five or six kids, you know, that's futons in the living room, just so they got a place that's not outside and stay out of the rain, that's pretty much it. It's not a lot, it's about, what, two-hundred-and-sixty square feet additional, and it's not big in the first place. I think it'll be about the same size as the garage, an extra two feet on one side, roughly.
Is there currently a bathroom in the facility?
No.
No?
There's one, there's an outhouse.
Okay, it is the outhouse, okay, so that's why there's no septic, okay.
We're not planning that, and if that happens, my brother's gonna be, go on that route.
Okay.
To me, it's not important.
All right, was there any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any other questions or comments from the board?
This is Ken. One of the things that we've looked at while we were there is, is there a possibility of moving it back to the shore impact zone fifty feet from the thirty-eight? I personally, I don't know how the rest feel, I see no benefit to try and do it. It probably could be moved, but it really doesn't change things substantially, especially since it's a very heavily buffered shoreline zone. No height change whatsoever. I don't see any benefit to try and impose moving it.
May I? Mr. Johnson would probably know this better. Now, this roof on here, as far as height goes, is a seven-twelve pitch. What's going on is a four-twelve, and it's going the other way, so it's actually gonna be a little shorter. So we're going for the single level thing here, because we're talking crippled and old people, more or less. This is Tim speaking, also, you maintain your parking at the bottom of that hill at none in its location. If, if it was left where it is right now and, and built on, you would be able to maintain your parking there.
Yeah, this is Larry, it's definitely minimum impact on what you're proposing to do, so I think I'm for it.
Would you entertain a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we accept the variance. But I, I do think a couple of conditions I would like to place on it. One is that you, you can no, you cannot do any further expansions in the future. And that if it has to be rebuilt, it would have to be moved back to the hundred-foot.
I understand completely.
You're okay with that?
Well, if it had to be rebuilt, it's just, it would pretty much, unless you got a wall standing and race any grandfather in there, and it would just have to be reinvented, so to speak, to up-to-date standards, there's no question on that. I mean, Dad and Grandpa didn't, this is sixty years ago we're talking about, they kinda were playing by, with a hammer and a handsaw. This is Tim speaking, I got a question. I know we talked, we have talked in the past, and if, if there was a major disaster where it burnt down, we've made conditions where you can't rebuild. But I think saying no expansion in the future, Eric has said that everybody has a right to a variance
Okay.
In the past. So I understand where you were saying that, though.
Yeah.
So it would be, in the case of the structure being lost because of wind or tornado or fire, we'd put a condition that it couldn't re, it'd have to move back to setback.
What you're saying, he wouldn't be excited about putting no future expansion?
Yeah.
But, but the if have to be rebuilt, moving it back, who could do that? Okay.
If it was destroyed, I wouldn't, I would've, like I say, my dad wasn't a builder, I am, I would've went differently.
Sure.
Just out of common sense on sight, but since I'm, me and my brother are gonna wind up inheriting it, and I've discussed this with him, it doesn't need to be any bigger than that, like ever. Because chances are either you or I will retire there and hopefully the grandkids will carry on the tradition, but that's about it.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion, Ken.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we accept the variance with the condition that if the structure ever has to be rebuilt, it would have to be moved back to the setback hundred-foot requirement. Findings of facts, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and the intent of official controls. It's not feasible to move it back, reasonable, there's no height change, and there's a heavy buffer by the lake. Therefore, I, I believe the addition is within, is in harmony with the general purposes of the Shoreland Management Ordinance.
Question, please? Just to verify, now, when you say we're not talking damaged, we're talking destroyed, right? Like tornado takes it out? Not a parcel loss, metreg landing on it?
No, it has to do, if you, if you decide to wanna rebuild a new one, it can't be done in the same location.
Say yes, I get that.
Tim's point, if it gets destroyed, no, you're allowed to rebuild it or whatever. Yeah.
All right, just to be clear is all.
Second is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official controls. A two-hundred-and-sixty square foot addition to a seven-hundred square foot structure is more than a reasonable request. And I think we can accept the, uh, the findings of facts from Environmental Services recommendation for three, four, and five.
Very good. I have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Tim, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this variance thirty-two-v dash twenty-five. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much, you will get a letter from Environmental Services.
The question is, where is that letter going to go? Is it going to go to that address, or my father's address, or mine?
It'll be the address on the application.
I think I put both.
It'll be the mailing address.
Say that again, please?
The mailing address listed on the application. Looks like seven-five-seven-five Seventh Avenue.
Yeah, that's mine. P O Box one-two-three. We don't have carriers out there, so you need to put that on it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, variance application thirty-three-v dash twenty-five by Karen, Kevin, and Linda, I'm sorry, Schneider, Lot Three, Block One, Cool Pine, Section Twelve, Township one forty, Range thirty-two, White Oak Township on Williams Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-eight dot forty-seven dot zero-zero-three-hundred. Applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Sections five-oh-one and five-oh-one-point-two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance and the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot minimum lot width required at the ordinary high-water mark. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Schneider, two-one-six-two-five Wood Avenue, Deerwood, Minnesota.
Linda Schneider, same address.
Thank you very much, and a brief description of what you're looking for.
We're requesting a variance to Section five-oh-one dot two that requires a hundred-and-fifty feet of shoreline to build a dwelling. Started a couple of weeks ago, we bought this property this summer, and we talked to Stacy here about trying to alter, did an amendment on a permit on a shed that was built in twenty-twenty-one on the property. And we had hoped to turn that into a bunkhouse or a guesthouse. Anyway, and we got callbacks, they had the lot only had a hundred-and-forty-five feet, not a hundred-and-fifty. And prior to buying this, we researched it extensively, and everything we could find showed a minimum of a hundred-and-fifty, which was being taxed at a hundred-and-fifty. Several permits had been pulled on that property, and everything was from one-fifty-seven to one-sixty-one of shoreline. And also then in two thousand, when this plat was developed, it was signed off by Hubbard County Planning Commission and, and planning and zoning as well as the township. So really caught us by surprise, we had no thought that it wouldn't be a buildable lot. So we're requesting the variance that going forward, if we want to convert the shed into a guesthouse or build a dwelling that we could be able to.
Very good, any questions immediately? Seeing none, I'll open the public comment. Seeing none, I'll open to public comment. Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment. This is Larry, Tim, did you talk to Eric at all about your thoughts on this?
I, I did not, I did not, but, um...
Should we squeeze Brian?
We could make a recommendation, couldn't we?
I, I think we can.
Yeah.
You want to state it, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right, so, in talking amongst ourselves, we truly think, and I hope legal doesn't get involved here with this statement, but that since the county signed off on it and everything, and that all your paperwork showed that it is indeed a hundred-and-fifty-foot lot, for the county to require you to get the variance and pay for it and everything is just not fair. So, we would like to actually, beyond approving this, which we still have to go through that step, but also see the county waive the variance application on this, because I, I think it's out of line.
Waive the fee?
Waive the fee, not for go, going through the application process.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the variance, but, you know, in favor of waiving the fee.
Got it, okay. Yeah, we can...
That recommendation is up to Eric.
Yeah, we can make the recommendation, but...
The, I think, just to add to that, to discussion, um, I think it also was our probable observation that originally shorelines were kinda meandered along the shoreline when they were measured, and it probably was a hundred-and-fifty feet when the lot was actually platted, but the, the current shoreline ord- ordinance, as I understand, measures from the two stakes at the corners of your property and draws draw, straight line, so that straight line's a hundred-and-forty-five, but that originally, when they platted it, they followed more the contour of the shoreline, which we probably feel was a hundred-and-fifty, so, that supports the fact that, I'm trying to support the fact that we should approve this.
Right, okay, very good. Yeah, because there, again, the fact that we changed how we measure was not your issue, so, um, uh, let's see, do we do public comment? Did I do public comment?
I think I...
Okay, in case I didn't, we're gonna open again for public comment, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Um, I would be prepared to make a motion on this, it seems pretty straightforward, um, to approve this, um, variance, um, because it is so close, and because of the change in the measuring systems, everything else is in order, we can accept staff's finding of facts, and we will make the recommendation that if possible, they will waive the fee on this as well, so...
Appreciate that.
Um, do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Mike.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept, um, this variance, um, thirty-five V twenty-five, nope, that's the wrong one, sorry. Where am I at here? Getting all caught up in my own stuff, here we go, uh, thirty-three dash V dash twenty-five. Uh, we have a motion and a second, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, this is Ken, I vote aye.
Michael?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye. So, the variance passes for sure, and we'll see how they handle the rest of our recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moving on, variance application thirty-four dash V dash twenty-five by Interlock and Tennis Club, part of Lot Thirteen and all of Lot Fourteen, east side of Pine Cone Camp, Section Thirty-Five Township One-Forty-One, Range Thirty-Four, Lake Emma Township on Big Sand Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel sixteen dot thirty-seven dot forty-one-five-hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section Seven-O-Two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a proposed structural alterca, alteration of a dwelling located in the shore impact zone. State your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Richard Schroder, ninety-one-seventy-one Andry Court Northwest, Ramsey, Minnesota, five-five-three-oh-three.
Okay, and a brief description of the variance, please.
Uh, we're asking permission to put in four I-beams to help level the cabin, to do that, we'll put in, um, some Intellijacks underneath of each I-beam, I think there's five per beam, that'll go along the joists, uh, east and west of the cabin, to, to try to bring it to level.
This is Larry, one question I should've asked when you were on Lot Views, are those jacks, um, and I assume they're all kinda synced together so they can run them from outside, is that air power on them, or do they use oil?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I think they're hydraulic jacks.
Okay. And I know they do this, so, and if, yeah...
Yeah, it's innovative basement authority that will do it.
I was just, my concern would be an oil leak, or whatever, if those lines do indeed stay underneath, but, again, assuming they know what they're doing.
This is Tim, I have a question for Brian. Brian, on, um, if, if we were just doing inside maintenance, I wouldn't need a variance or anything to do that, but it's only because he's actually raising this four inches, is it, is that what's triggering that?
Correct, reinforcing the foundation, so it's, it's a structural...
Because it's a little different airspace than it was before, or what?
It's just the, you're, you're, you're altering the foundation, even though it's slightly, it's just the foundation work that triggers the variance within the shore impact zone.
Okay, uh, the...
So, we don't have a foundation at all.
I, I seen that, and, uh, so, you'll, that will remain the same, and you'll still have your water running through...
Yep.
Underneath?
Everything will be the same, except we won't have the little cinder brock, blocks holding up the edges, all, all the plumbing will be the same.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, at this time, I'd open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment. Anybody else got any comments or questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Make a motion for me?
Yeah, this is Tim, I'll make a motion to approve Application Thirty-four dash V dash twenty-five and accept the staff's findings of facts.
This is Ken, I'll second, then.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept this variance application, um, no conditions or anything. Tim, how do you vote?
I vote, this is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye. Variance passes, thank you very much, and you will get a letter from Environmental Services. Thank you, you bet, thank you. All right, moving on, variance application thirty-five dash V twenty-five by G-two-G Limited Liability Corp., um, parts of government slots three, four, five, and six, all in Section Two Township, One-Forty-Two, Range Thirty-Two, Steamboat River Township on Benedict Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-four dot, dot, oh-two, dot, oh-one-one-hundred. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section Seven-O-One of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for proposed additions to a structure devoted to a non-conforming use. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, um, I'm Steve Mallory, and address is three-four-two-one-five, County Thirty-Nine, Laporte, and this is my wife, Rosemary.
Thank you very much, a brief description of your variance application, please.
Yeah, so, we're, um, we're doing a variance application, we'd like to put an addition on to our home, um, that's on Benedict Lake, um, the property is, uh, is forty-five acres and seven-hundred feet of shoreline, with six cabins, um, we built a home there, um, in twenty-twenty, um, and we just need to put an addition on, uh, on, on both sides of the house, one is a twenty-four by twenty-seven addition on, on the west side of the home, and the other one is a porch addition that's sixteen by twenty on the east side, uh, of the house. I guess when you buy lake property and build a home, you realize you have more friends than you thought you did.
Okay.
And because it is, um, I, I believe, if I'm understanding this right, if, because it is a resort home classification, and it requires a variance rather than a, a permit, so the process of the variance.
So, basically, Brian, if this was not a non-conforming use, it would all fall within the parameters of permit?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Uh, open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment, any other comments or...
Just, uh, this is Tim speaking, yeah, meets, uh, all the setbacks, and, uh, it looked very nice there, the hillside, well-vegetated, and looks very nice.
Thank you.
Meets density and, uh, all those setbacks, yeah.
All right, this is Larry, I would move that we accept Application Thirty-five dash V twenty-five, uh, based on the information we have, and accept staff's finding of facts. Do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Mike.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept this, um, variation application. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, application thirty-six dash V dash twenty-five by Gunice Swenson, Lot One on, part of Lot Two, Birch Point, Section Sixteen Township One-Forty, Range Thirty-Three, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-one dot thirty-eight dot zero-zero-one-hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section Nine-O-Two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance, proposed grading in a steep slope that exceeds permissible volume. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Charlie Lee, uh, one-five-one-three-four, Hundred Nineteenth Avenue, Park Rapids, Minnesota.
Gunice Swenson, seven-five-one-Ninth Street, Southwest Pine Island, Minnesota.
Very good, thank you. And a brief description of the variance you're applying for.
Uh, we would like to build a new home, and we're moving back from, uh, where she's at right now, within that fifty-foot impact zone, to almost the hundred-foot, not quite, because of, uh, septic issues with making that compliant and keeping our distance from the septic. Um, the variance is, I can only move thirteen-point-five yards of dirt because of the incline, and so, basically, I'm asking to be able to move more dirt than that.
This is Larry, what is the plan for the existing structure that's there?
Um, it's included in the permit, I believe, but it's, uh, two...
For the, for the existing structure?
Correct.
What's gonna happen to it?
Yes.
It's being torn down.
It is being removed.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Oh, yeah, there.
Okay. Um, seeing no immediate questions, I will open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, this is Tim, speaking, uh, just a comment that Brian and I were up on top, seeing where the septic was going, and, um, the, the five-foot, uh, makes sense to, to need the variance for that, to maintain setback from the septic on top.
I don't think we need a variance for that, because we're already within, uh, right?
Right.
Okay.
This is Larry, I assume you're going to use whatever, um, silt fence or buffer we need to, as you're excavating, and...
Correct, sir.
Okay. This is Larry, um, I see no reason that this shouldn't be accepted, um, it, it's just part of excavating that needs to be done to build the house, you are moving back from the lake, so that gives us a little more, um, room to not have the impact on the shoreline that would without sitting right on top of it, so I would be in favor of this. All right, and having said that, I will move that we accept variance, Application Thirty-six dash V, um, twenty-five, and accept staff's finding of facts.
This is Tim, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and accept, and second to accept this variance. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. All right, I ran out of applications.
Larry, do you wanna adjourn?
Uh, we have to go through, where are my minutes here? Um, any communications, for, anything you're aware of that's coming up?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move?
I second, uh, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye, thank you very much.